I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Even politicians. We'll open up again this morning with anyone in the audience that'd like to speak, please come forward. And give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, how's everyone doing?
Good morning.
My name is Josh Harris, I live at 4521 10th Street. I am a member of the Vero Beach Lifeguard Association. We are a non-for-profit, our mission is to promote lifeguarding and water safety in our community and surrounding communities. I have a few things I wanted to just bring up with the recreation budget being on the agenda today, and I did have a few papers that I'd like to pass out to whoever would need one.
I'll have one.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, wait, is it the one we're writing on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll take that.
We'll get to this sheet in just a second, I'm trying not to take up too much of your time. First off, just like to say, we just thank you guys for all your hard work, I know that decisions can't be easy that you're making, so just thank you for that. One particular thing I wanted to bring up, specific to the lifeguards, are just the value that they add to the city of Vero Beach, not only are we a lifesaving organization, we're ambassadors, or they are ambassadors, for Vero Beach. Every day we answer questions, not just about the beach, but hey, what hotel should we stay at tonight, or where's McKee Botanical Gardens, or directions to any particular place, so the value that the city has in the lifeguards, in that aspect of saying, I mean, it's just advertisement and a whole, you know, it's just such a great asset for you guys to have, and I think, just moving forward and going with your decisions, I hope that you'll take that into account, and the value that the lifeguards do add. Obviously, our number one priority is safety, but we do answer a lot of questions and we take time to interact with the public and do the best they can to make the city of Vero Beach look good. Another thing, the lifeguards are proactive, there's not many agencies that can be as proactive as they are, and a lot of that goes into just letting people know that they're maybe entering a dangerous situation, the water's rough, there's jellyfish in the water, your umbrella's blocking our view, things like that. There are no statistics that can tell how many lives that we save before they get into the situation of needing to be saved, but I can guarantee you, it's up there, it definitely is. The paper that I passed out to you, I will go ahead and explain this to you, the top is titled "Hummiston Beach." One of the proposals in the 2013 and 2014 budget, the hours right now for Hummiston Beach are 10 to 3 for 40 weeks out of the year, and 9 to 5 for 12 weeks out of the year, and that 9 to 5 hours are what you see on this paper, June, July, and August. The next 2013 and 2014 budget will, the proposal is to go ahead and back that 9 to 5 to 10 to 3, so Hummiston will be 10 to 3 year round. So what this is, is I took those busy months, and I just wanted to show you guys some numbers that were concerning to me, and just kind of look at it from a different angle. As you can see, in 2012, that's what these numbers represent, in June, July, and August, our park attendance total in the guarded and unguarded area, which I use unguarded as well, because these people use our access, and of course, we do keep an eye on them, our first priority is always our guarded area, but we do keep an eye on them as well. That number is 61,155, the total number of swimmers we had in those three months are 47,662, and of course, on the bottom, that is just a list of what we keep for, a list of things that we keep for our records, preventative actions, medicals, responses, things of that nature. The numbers that are marked in yellow, and how I'll explain this to you is, when you take Hummiston from 9 to 5 to 10 to 3, that's a 38 percent reduction in those hours, so I just applied that same number to our total numbers for those three months, and 38 percent of that 63,000 people in the park attendance is 23,984. And what that number is, is it's an estimate of the people who were guarded last year, who, by an estimate and by statistics, will not be guarded next year, that's the number that you get when you take away those hours. And the same thing, that's going to be 18,000 swimmers in the water that will not have a lifeguard watching over them, statistically, once again. Down at the bottom, you can see that that's 824 preventative actions that will not happen, that's 824 people that we can't tell you're getting yourself into a dangerous situation. A couple other of the numbers that are scary to me are the Meyer Medical's, there's 17 we won't be there for responses, and as well as a rescue even, which we would consider a life-threatening rescue. I'm sure everyone has, or maybe you haven't, heard the expression that you can't put a value on someone's life, I'm pretty sure that's a common expression. I took the $25,000, I believe that's what the savings is, when you cut or reduce the hours at Hummiston, and these numbers don't even reflect South and/or JC that you're looking to cut the hours at as well, these hours don't reflect, so this number, these numbers do go up. Anyway, that $25,000, I just put that up on, just to the swimmers that will not be guarded, that's 18,000 swimmers, for $25,000, we're valuing each one of those lives at 72 cents a person. That's, I mean, that's just statistics, that's numbers, and that's what we're doing, and if it's worth it for the city to make that decision, to do that with the risk of lawsuits or losing sleep at night, if you can make that decision with that evaluation, then we just, as BBLA, just want to come up here and say, you know, this is what's at stake. So that's, and like I said, those numbers go up, and that evaluation goes down when you add in South Beach. And a couple really quick other things, in saying that, I think it's a dangerous move on the city to reduce hours again at our beaches, I don't think it's a good move. One thing I just, you know, Vero Beach, I believe, and I think my numbers and dates are right, but in 1919, we established the city of Vero, and that's what it was called, the city of Vero, and then however many years, 1925 came along, and they decided they wanted to call it City of Vero Beach, you know, and I think there's a reason for that, and for the last 90 years, that's the way it's been, we're the city of Vero Beach, and I think it's a major draw on this beautiful town, I think that's what brings people in. And just on that note, I believe just a year or two ago, Lake Worth down south is trying to add beach to its name, I mean, why do you think they're doing that? They're doing that because they feel that it's going to put a draw on their town, and I strongly believe that. This is just a couple of things, we can't plan rescues, the ocean doesn't coincide with hours, I was asked a question, as far as, is 9 to 10, is that really a busy hour? It's a little less busy, but sure, things happen between those hours, things happen between 3 and 5, we just had a couple of life-threatening rescues here in this month that happened in that 3 to 5 hour, so it's just, it's very concerning to the BBLA, and that's why we wanted to come up here and speak on behalf of the lifeguards. I know you guys are, the Recreation Advisory have been working on workshops and ways to produce revenue for us, we talked about maybe having advertising on our towers, some people may think that's tacky, we have spoke to a gentleman that can do it for us, it's a no-startup cost, once he recoups his money, we start making profit, and I believe the numbers that he gave us, of course, it's just an original quote, it was a few hundred dollars per tower per month, so it's a few grand a year, it's not, may not save a job in the end, but it could, you know, and it absolutely is going to take some strain off of us, I think if that's something we get into quick, it could be done before the next fiscal year, and I think it could save us, and parking, I know pay parking is a real funny issue, I think there's 100 different ways we can address that without coming in and putting a parking meter at every single one, and it's something we've got to deal with for 50 years, or however it works, you know, I think we can do something easier, I just think there's a lot of different options for that, and there's obviously a lot of different things that can be done, so anyway, just please consider the things that I said, I appreciate you guys giving me the time, and good luck going forward with the budget hearings today, thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Any questions?
Thank you, Josh. Good morning, Tim.
Good morning, Mayor, how are you?
Do we have another? Sure. Your name and address for the record, please.
Sue Doneno, 5125 Trade Winds, Vero Beach, and I'm on the Recreation Commission, and I just wanted to say a couple things, we did increase rates at the end of 2012, so we haven't had a full year to experience the kind of savings that that will have provided, and also, at recent Recreation Commission meetings, there have been a huge public attendance, and they're there to support the lifeguards and to support specifically Gabby at the tennis court, and with regard to Gabby, almost to a citizen, they're saying, we'll pay more, the tennis club is a bargain, we'll pay more, don't take her away from us. So what I'd like to suggest, and we've recently set up four different committees to address fundraising and budget savings, so I'd like to suggest you just give us a little bit of time to get these committees going, and to see what kind of economies we can come up with over the next six months before you take people away from us, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Good morning, my name's Don Lawless, I live at 2105 5th Street, Vero Beach, Florida. Good morning, I'm the president of Vero Beach National Little League, and I know the city's under stress, and I understand, but we're under stress too, I have 600 kids that may not play baseball, and we're trying to figure out where, why, when, and how, and I have two children of my own, I played Little League, I'm sure there are quite a few people that played Little League here, it is of value to the children, I mean, it really is, we're pushing our youth away, you know, we got lots of pet food stores and things here, I'm sorry. We have a lot of food stores, we don't have toy stores, we don't have anything for kids here, we're losing a lot of stuff for our children, so it's going to get bad for our kids, I mean, and I'm just, it hurts me to see what's happening to our youth, and I understand, I really do understand, but we can't just forget the youth, because it'll come back, and it will haunt us, the parents, the grandparents, so on and so on, so I'm here on behalf of Little League, just do the best you can, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, Tim, you have an opening statement you'd like to regale us with?
Good morning, Mayor, Council. The budget that I worked on this year, I was looking at the 10.9 percent figure that I'd seen for the general fund, and I took a look at that for my own fund, and that would have to come out of, basically out of personnel, so as I took a look at that, and looked at middle management, I'll go to page, 130 is the page with our mission statement on it, and our staffing. I would cut out the Assistant Marina Director's position, which is actually vacant right now, I have another position that's-
Sir, how long has that been vacant?
Technically, about two weeks.
And has, have difficulties arisen because of that vacancy?
Not that I have seen so far, no. And we also had another fellow that was one of our dock attendants, which was one of the other positions that I was looking at, and I let everybody know ahead of time that I was looking at this stuff, and he had found another job, so he left about three weeks ago, so that position's vacant.
Is that this one?
Jason Hall. Is that the senior?
Yes.
And the senior dock attendant was the third position that I was looking at, and from what I understand, he wants to retire. Now, in order to do this, I would have to, I was asking for another seasonal part-time employee, and I would also have to reduce our operating hours from 12 hours a day to an eight to five day, there are several marinas that are currently doing that, and as I checked with some of my peers in the municipal marina business up and down the coast, they're actually already at that point where they have about two full-time staff members, and the rest are either part-time, or they're drawing them from temp agencies.
So your hours would be going from?
Seven to seven, to, oh, eight to five.
And the nearest marina that provides gasoline, what are their hours?
That would be Lagerhead, and they're eight to five.
They're eight to five, as well? So we are-
Grand Harbor.
What percentage of our business is falling within those hours that Lagerhead does not provide gas service?
Well, I've looked at the numbers, between five and seven, we do have some business, but I believe that most of it is people that come in and pay later after they dock earlier in the day, and I think that if I gave the public a long enough heads-up, our cruising customers and stuff like that, that we could work it into the hours.
Do we see during the summertime period, when the locals are dropping their boats, that there is that usage during the extra hours, or is that not a big?
No, actually, the extra hours would, they're more important in the busy season.
In the season?
Right.
Even though it's getting dark by that time?
Right.
Interesting, okay, because I wouldn't want to cut off our locals if that is something that our locals, our presidents are using during the summer, but if they're not, from what you're saying, then I can't see-
Yeah, I had, I opened this morning, there was one gas sale, when I opened, a fellow was going fishing, but-
Right, that's what I was considering.
But we may not have another customer until nine o'clock, so.
All right, then I would agree with your assessment, then.
You also run the pump-out, the cell, or pump-out boat, who would do that?
Yes, actually, we do that on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and one of the part-time staff runs it.
Just as another comment, at your suggestion, over the last six months or eight months, the Marine Commission has gotten much more involved in the finances of the marina, they've reviewed CAFERS, they've looked at quarterly reports, and they did have the opportunity to go through this draft version of the budget in pretty good detail at a recent meeting. Their recommendation was essentially to go ahead and implement these changes, give it a try, with the caveat that if it appeared to be impacting customers, or impacting the, you know, extremely good reputation of our marina, that we could take another look at it, perhaps supplement with some more part-time help, and they also are actively looking at ways to increase revenues and develop some new revenue sources for the marina, so it was, I guess, Tim, the best way to describe it was a, you know, suggestion that we go ahead, at least for now, and try this, and see how it works, while they continue to try to find other ways to increase those revenues at the marina.
Right, and for the last year and a half, I've been printing reports every morning to check how the daily business goes from the day before, and kind of follow the trends and patterns.
Great, wonderful.
Any questions, Tim?
Are we currently charging rent to the boat trailers, which are all around the marina?
Well, we started.
We did, good.
And one of the other things we're doing is we're, now that the apartment is open, we're going to rent the apartment out that the Assistant Director used to live in for another revenue stream. I'm talking to people for kayak, bike, and paddleboard rentals, we had discussed-
Is that bringing in a company?
Yes.
That's a great idea, that's wonderful. That's great.
And some more open storage was also discussed at the Marine-
As long as they are holding their own insurance, and we're not liable.
Right, right, and some beer and wine sales were discussed.
And they're very popular at other marinas around, not that I would know.
And we're looking at some other sundry items to sell in our store, so.
Is that, are those services provided by the Lagerhead Marina, which kind of is our largest competition?
Yes, they have, they have a fairly nice, actually, a lot of our marinas have fairly nice stores.
Exactly.
Right, we're a little limited on space.
Sir, I just had a question about, yeah, the debt service that we have on the marina, we're looking at $339,000 in debt payment projected for next year, how long is this note out to?
What page are you on?
Page 129.
We purchased the marina in July 2007 on a 20-year note.
That's sufficient, that's-
That was the vertical storage that we purchased?
Yes, the vertical storage, the floating docks in the back, and the building that Mr. Waddell's currently renting for his insurance company.
And it does run out through, matures in October 2027. One of the things, if you look at the CAFER over the last few years, we actually have shown some decreases in net assets in the last couple of years, because for a period of time, we had a find grant that was actually paying the part of this principal in interest, and in the first year, when that grant dropped away, it left the marina operation sort of upside down from the business from the enterprise fund standpoint, so some of the things that Tim is doing are designed to put the balance sheets and put the revenue statements of the marina back in the black, and while this budget projected out as a statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net assets shows a positive number for this coming year, so that's part of the attempt, too.
Are we at complete occupancy for the vertical storage?
That we are, we are not for our small wet slips, that's, we, I'm encouraged, we had a very good holiday weekend, we sold an amount of gasoline that would have been comparable to seven or eight years ago, so I was encouraged by that, and people seem to be spending more money, I'm going to call a guy back today to, we just lost one fellow in dry storage, and he wants to put a boat in there, so that'll be a quick turnaround.
Another question, with the companies that you're speaking about, in terms of potentially renting bicycles and kayaks and other boats there at the facility, have there been any concepts of some type of a tour organization, for instance, leading kayak trips, ecological things over to the islands owned by Vero Beach, more activities for the tourists in our beaches and through our city?
Okay, I'm not that far along with it yet, but no, I think that's a great idea, so.
Okay, I know Jim and I took a trip over to the islands, and we were both amazed by that asset that the city has that is lightly used.
Actually, a park, one of the things that Tim has done on occasion is take a lot of our tenants out for fishing trips and that kind of stuff, and he will lead, they will all take their own boats and stuff, but he will lead the crew, so they work sort of as a unit, in trying to promote the spirit of core, we also, is it around Thanksgiving, where we have the luncheon, and we bring the folks in there, and it seems to be working very well in that.
It's a good idea.
I know we had made some contact a couple of years ago with the Chamber, and that they were providing some information to our short-term residents who are living on their boats during the season, and I hope that is continuing as well.
Yeah, and actually, we started our own welcome package, so we get items from everywhere, from the Chamber, from the theater, from the art museum, and-
Wonderful, good.
Good idea.
And we still have the goal line stopping there.
Yeah, we don't want to lose that.
Cindy, if you would, is that debt service note, is that a variable interest rate?
No, that's fixed.
Okay, I'm just seeing that the debt service went up.
The debt service went up from?
I'm seeing from 315 to 339, I'm just curious what that's a function of.
Oh, I think I can have a look at the amortization schedule, on some of our debt, they tried to make it like level, and so that as the principal goes down, the interest, you know, it balances out to level debt, this is one that apparently they didn't do that way, so I can grab the amortization schedule and have a look, but I think it'll continue to go down.
Any questions for Tim on 131?
Well, I have a general question, Mr. Mayor, and I'll ask a specific question later on, but the general question may answer the question, we have a marina division and a mooring division, looking at the general ledger, it's kind of hard to untangle the two, but why do we need two divisions, what's?
We have, we have sovereignty submerged land leases with the state of Florida, and we do not pay lease fees for the mooring field, and that's why we have a separate division for that, we have to show the expenditures that we make on the mooring field.
It's purely an accounting convention, those expenditures end up in there by way of a journal entry, so that we have a separate accounting that we can show to the state to support that submerged lands lease, there isn't actually two divisions, it's just a journal entry that moves expenses over.
Thank you, which page are we on now, Mr. Mayor?
131. Tim, I noticed the dock rental, transient dock rental dropped 16 percent, what are you predicting there?
Well, I wanted to bring the number down, it was probably a little more realistic, but we had things like, this year, we had Hurricane Sandy, which prevented people from coming down early, and there were some people that came down later, we also have a little more competition to the south that we never had before, so the city of Stewart has a marina that was leased to the Hyzingas, and they added a lot of extra docks down there, and Herbert Town Marina in Fort Pierce had lowered their rates to try to draw some more people in, so, and our rate structure actually is where it was at in 2009, I didn't really want to approach raising the rates at this time, because my competition has.
Yeah, and dock rental in the south complex has gone to zero.
Well, that actually, for the last year or so, has been rolled into the regular dock rental, because it's too hard to track it, because I have other employees that are keying things into the cash register, and if they don't key that in as a, the south complex, then you miss that piece of ruin, and so.
Anybody else have anything for Tim on?
Well, then, when we add the two together, we're looking at a very large decrease in the rentals, are we not?
Well, it rolls into both transient and permanent dock rentals. It's still a lot of money, you're talking about $95,000.
If you look at the dock rental year-to-date for both, it's 141, and if you, of course, dock rental can be seasonal, but you have four months of summer left, but if it was straight line, your 210 would be a more appropriate number, I'm just making the same point you are.
Yeah, actually, the transient dock rental is very seasonal, it runs from November through late April, we do pick up some summer people, which, we've got a few in there now, that like to come in when everyone else is gone, so.
They're hiding. Just a question on the diesel fuel sales, was this just that we had been overly optimistic, and, or?
Well, that's a really hard number to hit, it's kind of a pass-through, because, you know, we buy it, and put a margin on it, and every month, I provide finance with a fuel report, so we know, they know as an asset what still remains in the tank, and what the value of that asset is at the time, so.
Mrs. Turner, year-to-date, again, it's seasonal, but it's 334 of the 390, again, makes the number look a little low.
Yeah, the way our fuel business works, we sell a lot of diesel fuel during the busy season, then we sell a lot of gasoline in the summer, so that's when most of the locals come out, and then like, the early part of next week, our visiting motor yacht, Intrepid will be coming over, and they're going to take 3,000 gallons, so that'll spike that diesel up a little bit, so.
Anything else for Tim? Anything else, anything else for Tim on 131? Going to 132 by department? And 133?
133, the utilities, $86,750. Now, this may be the two divisions put back and forth, which is why I asked that earlier. But the year-to-date utilities on the general ledger, I don't know whether it's for one division or two, is $38,200.
It would be, excuse me, I believe there are utilities that are put over against the mooring division. So in the GL, you'd have to look at both utilities line items, the one in the mooring division and also the one in the marina division.
What is the?
And this is a roll-up. The mooring division is the next.
That one's on page 137.
There's another $11,709 year-to-date in the moorings division to go with the, with the amount that's over in the marina division.
So that would make the year-to-date $50,000.
Yeah.
And that in itself would be pretty seasonal, too, because you've got a lot less large boats on the dock drawing electric.
Which power rates were used in this? The reduced power rates or the, or the ones that they have been and will probably be?
On, on this one, we had not assumed the lower rates, only because at the point in time where we put this draft budget together, Tim had not gotten a good breakout of water versus electricity. Because we suspect that his water use is fairly high down there. So given that we're going back the other direction, this won't change for the next round of the budget, so.
Anything else?
134.
134. Tim, what, what happened? I'm not familiar with the storage drainage rental building. We dropped that offline completely. What's, what was that, just from my?
Oh, it was a drain pipe that we put in front of the rental building to keep-
Oh, okay.
It was a capital project.
It was a capital project. Okay.
Tim, looking at landscaping, so far year-to-date is $12,200. In the prior year, it was $18,509. You well may be doing a lot of landscaping, I don't know, but it's a question. It says that you're going to do landscaping that you haven't been doing in the past.
He gets charged on a quarterly basis by the, by the grounds division. That's one of those charge-outs.
Or it just goes back and charges him.
But we only do those journal entries quarterly.
So what you're saying is that this $12,200 is, there's a catch-up in that.
There's a catch-up.
Right. I'll, I'll get a document that comes from Public Works to initial and provide the account number and send it to finance.
If you consider sales of merchandise at the marina, would that be something you would add into the budget, a projected increase prior to us approving the budget?
That's a good question. That would have to come from purchases for resale, which goes into the miscellaneous accounts.
Okay. I would think that rather than leaving that type of product into miscellaneous, that we do add another line item, for instance, you know, sundry sales or something like that, so we could track it more actually.
Yeah, we do.
Because miscellaneous at running $8, $10,000 is a little concerning. Without delineation of what those numbers are for.
On page 136, we have our purchases for resale. And currently, that's to purchase ice, skin so soft or musk, I mean, just different things that we sell on our counter in there.
It would be nice to have a few life jackets, children's life jackets, things like that, if someone lost one, or hats or something like that, you know, just to help out the tourists and the families that are using the marina.
We, at this point, have so little in retail sales, but yes, if we were to really develop a retail sales program, et cetera, you know, it'd be appropriate to break it out to an actual shipstore line item. But right now, it's just, it's fairly minimal, so.
Anything on 134? Anything else on 134? 135, Marina Division. I had nothing on 135. 136, Marina Division. And 137, mooring division.
How are we doing with the placement of the new buoys? That's all completed?
No, I wanted to phase that in over three years. In fact, I was going to ask Cindy if, if that was something that I could count as a capital, but we pay for-
Give me right now, just for the record.
Is that in the book here?
Put her right on the, put her right online.
We, we pay for the, we pay for the buoys out of our moorings maintenance account. And I wanted to phase that over a three-year period. We placed 15 buoys last year. We'll probably do another 15 this year and then finish the rest of them the following year.
They're much more visible-
Yes.
And easy to see, and, and easy to see even in the, in the late afternoon and the early evening hours as the boats are coming in, which I'm sure they are.
The only mistake I made was I went with one number, and that, we reduced the numbers that the people want two, so they'll get two this year.
What's the cost of the, of the, of a buoy?
It is, with the tax, it's $14.87 a night.
And for the capital cost, actually, it's a-
The buoys, the new buoys that we are buying are $210 apiece.
And they last how long?
We'll probably get 10 years out of a buoy, so.
Minimal.
All right. Once in a while, we have to replace some chain, and we do do, we pay about, I think last year was about $1,200 for diving services to do inspections on, yeah.
Operating expenses, I have nothing. That's it. Trying to close you out.
One other thing, Tim, you had mentioned on the mission is a goodwill ambassador to the city by promoting tourism and local business patronage. And you mentioned that you have fielded a lot of questions from people. Would some type of a kiosk or something where businesses in the community could put brochures or ads or something like that help out? Because I know one of our individuals was up here just a few minutes ago from the lifeguard association, and they were saying that they actually do the same task, that they're getting questions, where can we, you know, go have, go to a restaurant? How do we get out to McKee? Those kind of things. So that's something that we may want to work together with the tourism division of the Chamber of Commerce to put those up within, not only you, but out at the beaches as well to take that. We understand you're doing a good job as that resource, but you guys have other work to do. And if we could provide something for that, that'd be great.
I want to think if I could, too, the Marine Commission. You know, boating is a lot more fun than spreadsheets, but they have really, really rolled up their sleeves these last few meetings and dived into the numbers and, and have come up with some great suggestions for revenue sources. They've gotten very knowledgeable, and I really appreciate their, their help and their input. I know Tim does, too.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Recreation.
Jim, we've got more people in the room than we did, except for the first day.
There are priorities.
There are priorities.
There is. Man in the entire world. He's got his notes.
We don't know what's in that box there. We're all dying to find out.
It's ticking.
Well, good morning to all.
Been causing a lot of trouble in this city, haven't you, sir?
I have. As you know, with the 10.9% reduction, it affects a number of different people, thousands of people. And when we make these decisions, the one thing that we looked at was the essential value enhanced and then the customer service, along with the benchmarking, everything else. We tried to weigh everything out and balance it across the board with everyone. And everybody is affected. There's no question. And I know that you guys have had a number of people come forward with their thoughts and concerns. I can tell you that we really do appreciate all the input that the public has sent us. It was very, very nice for them to make those comments with the lifeguards, with Little League, and with Riverside Tennis. So can't say enough about their support. Before I go into the, the, each of the accounts and everything else, I just wanted to go through a quick list of what, what our reductions will include. I have basically a cheat sheet of what it is. We probably pretty much left no one behind in this one. And we included the veterans with non-traditional events. We included the tree lighting event that we usually have at Royal Palm Point. Of course, with Little League, we're including the entire utility bill for them. We're looking at the fountain only running once, once a week, except for the spring break and summer break. In addition, we're looking at raising rates. As Sue had mentioned, we've talked with the Recreation Commission. We've gotten input from our staff. We're going to break into some subcommittees, thanks to some of the council members for their input. And the other thing is, we're going to look at raising fees. We've gotten some input from the public, as Sue had mentioned, for the tennis shop, which was good. You know, I mean, and that's important. It's very important. And with the lifeguards, the adjustments, you know, the idea would be that Josh had mentioned that the hours, what we had proposed were for the Humiston Beach Tower to be open 10 to 3 year-round instead of 10 to 3 and then 9 to 5 during the summer, and have either JC or south hours trimmed for a day. And those were, those were those, those were those cuts with the lifeguards. And then with the special events, we looked at some of our special events specifically more of the adult ones, which I know you guys have gotten input on that one, specifically Dancing Under the Stars. And look at reducing those and eliminate, possibly eliminating those, and looking more at the fundraising aspect of our job. So that's kind of the-
Rob, to put one little issue to bed, the Gabby Dwyer thing seems to be in the forefront of everyone's mind. I think we've solved that problem, but we are requiring that she will be part of the rate and understands it's going to be tied to being able to afford that position.
Correct, with your-
So we, we address that one.
All right, so that is off the table.
That is-
That's right.
As, as of right now, it's off the table. She just, the rates are going to have to justify her position.
I would also move that we take off the table any modifications to the lifeguard hours. I think that is a terrible thing that we could do for the tourism as well as for the businesses in our beachside area. As I've spoken over and over, I will not stand for any cuts to the lifeguard hours.
I would second it if it's a motion.
Thank you. It is a motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of retaining the lifeguards as is?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously?
And just for the record, we're confirming that's adding an additional $25,000 to our budget, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Cindy, are, are you keeping a running tab of all the?
Yes, she is.
I'll ask for it later if something's saying.
But, and tomorrow, you'll probably get a spreadsheet Cindy can tell you about. It's not going to be detailed like this, but it'll show you the balancing of where we are and how balances out.
Yeah, but tomorrow morning, I should be able to put all this in the form of, here's where we were, and here's what we changed, and here's how, at the very high level, how the, how the budget looks.
And we're going to need that anyway to, for the final question, the taxes.
Correct, correct.
On 149, on Recreation Operating Budgets, anyone have any comments? And on 150, I see you have a gross of minus four, which is painful, I know, Rob, but thank you. 151.
Mr. Mayor, before we go into these things, I just ask a few questions on the operating budget. On the revenues, I see you got about an increase of about 3%. The expenses decreased almost 9%. But when we're looking at the transfer, I mean, the transfer's cut by 14%. Are we, is that, the cut that we were looking at, was that 10%?
10.9.
10.9.
10.9%.
But it was not across the board, as you know. What we're trying to do is balance the budget. So we were taking it variable from different budgets. For example, the police department obviously didn't meet the 10.9. So it did hit the recreation higher percentage than it did because we had to make up-
And did that come from Cindy or from you telling him he had to cut up 14 instead of 10?
It was mine, that it came from me, and the 10.9 was the base cut based on our discussions. The only reason for the 14 is that-
If we needed it.
Yeah, if needed, because as you know, in our discussions, it was not going to be 10.9 across the board as instructed by the council. But if, for example, the police department didn't make it, then it would have to come from another department in order to get the total 10.9, which we were not able to achieve.
But, but just to clarify, his, Rob's actual cut was 10.7%. There's another $52,000 in there because of the assumption that we would sell the electric utility and pay off the unfunded pension liability. That isn't attributable to any actions that Rob took. That is going to go back into the budget now that we've changed that assumption. So if you look at the attachment A I put with the memo, his actual cut, the cut in the transfer to recreation from the prior year was 10.7% for the actions that he took and another $52,000 for the assumption that we were paying off the pension liability. So that's what kind of creates the confusion in that number.
Is that 10.7 off of the 2013 projected expenses or the 2012 projected?
It is. So the cut of, let's look at it this way, the cut of $215,000 from the transfer we made last year to what's required this year is $163,000 of actions that he took and another 50, some 52, 53,000 of pension savings.
I guess the position I'm trying to eventually get to is that, you know, you have a 3% increase in the revenues, which were probably some of the adjustments that you made. I would hate to see that type of performance get absorbed into the cut. Otherwise, you know, you're not, you're not making any, really any headway.
Well, it allowed his, it, it, you know, again, it's hard to, for any department to go 10.9. You know, you cut whole people, but, but his, his ended up right around the 10.7 mark, and obviously, we'll go back from there as we put back lifeguards and, and put back some of these other things. But, you know, again, a big chunk of it was that pension thing that's not going to be there anymore, so. You know, the, the thing with the recreation is, is that contribution from the general fund is a straight backfill to exactly what's lacking from revenues versus expenditures.
Right. Anything on 151? 152 by department? 153?
On that by department, by the way, that is the last year you're going to see that parks line. That's that big change we made back 1213 where we rolled all the park maintenance back into the general fund, so that'll disappear next year.
Under operating salaries, can you delineate the other employees that are you're potentially losing of the three now?
Well, it, it would be, what it's going to be for the operating salaries is that with your lifeguards, we'll have one of the, one of those positions put back in. But your other one would be a trades worker for your operating salaries, which is your full-time. Trades worker works with the fountain and with Leisure Square and with facilities, playgrounds, you name it, across the board.
And how many trades workers do we have currently?
We have three, one, one trades worker, one, one group leader, and then this would be number three. So it goes from three to two.
So we're going from three to two. And how do you expect this will modify the work that, the workload that these three individuals have throughout our community?
What's going to happen is the Royal Palm Point Fountain is one of the big hits, along with the closure of Leisure Square on Sundays, the, the shortening of the hours at Leisure Square, and then we will have to look for our other departments when we can or if we need to for assistance when it comes to some of the things that we do if we're shorthanded.
Have either you or the Recreation Committee or perhaps these new committees that are being put together taken a look at the usage of Leisure Square on the weekends as compared to the weeks? Because with our working community, it's not like they have time to participate in leisure activities during working hours, and yet we're cutting off one day of the week when individuals could utilize that.
Right. What we found with Sundays, we have, Leisure Square's open really three hours a day, okay, on Sundays. And what we found with Sundays is that people have gotten used to doing their workouts, enjoying the facility pretty much through Saturday. The Sunday, you get some people, but not a major, it's not a major impact.
And this will not include- And this will not include closing the pool on Sunday?
Pool's been closed on Sunday.
It has been closed on Sunday.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Let's talk about the fountain a little bit. Tell me what you're talking about doing.
Well, what we're talking about doing is the fountain running for 39 weeks of the year on Saturdays.
What does it run now?
It runs Wednesday through Saturdays, 39, well, I shouldn't say 39. I should say roughly 30 weeks of the year, it runs 10 to 3. Wednesday through Saturday, and then 13 weeks, it runs 9 to 7. And then the other, the other weeks, it runs just on Saturdays, the coldest time of the year.
What are we saving in doing that?
The overall savings is in the neighborhood of $8,000.
How much is it used?
It's heavily used in the warmest times of the year, because it's not, you know, again, it's not heated, so anytime it's cooled, you're not going to use it as much, but it is heavily utilized.
So we're talking just about having it open on Sunday instead of the schedule you just said?
Saturday.
Save the $8,000. I don't believe that's something we should do.
And also, by closing it and then restarting it, didn't we speak a couple of years ago on the Recreation Commission about the effect that that causes to the machinery? That it's not as good for it to be sitting idle for, and then having to bring it back up after a while causes some potential problems?
What we found is absolutely, the more usage, the better for the pumps. But the other thing we also have seen is that by running it at least once a week, it's been pretty effective. We've been, you know, we found that with those three months in the last couple of years when we shrunk the hours down.
Well, I think that one should be tabled and brought back with something a little more reasonable than once a week.
And I would like to see the fundraising commission, the fundraising advisory group to the Recreation Commission, take a look at that and whether they feel, as we have bandied back and forth for years now, on whether there should be some type of admission fee for that.
I think, I agree with what Tracy said. I think it should go to the Recreation Commission, and then I think it should, with her suggestions, and I think it should come back to us for decision later on. $8,000 isn't going to make...
And that is something that has been looked at with the Recreation Commission for at least five or six, seven years, since I was on the Recreation Commission. We talked about it.
Right now, I don't want to take it out.
Yeah, I don't want to take it out either.
So that's a motion and a second, I think.
All in favor of retaining the, it's a pool, actually.
Yeah, discussion too, though. I was going to say, I would...
I would suggest that we, yeah, say that this is an issue that we're still going to go back and revisit and let them come back and say, you know.
Yes.
I believe we're just tabling it for...
For further clarification. And if you would accept that modification to say, hey, let's table this issue for...
I'm modifying my motion to table, as you said, for further clarification.
Thank you.
One of the, and with that table, I would also say, one of the things that I would look at in the case, in this case, would be possibly to have that trades worker, one that we're limiting, be a permanent part-time position instead.
And what would that savings be?
That savings is roughly $30,000.
And they also would no longer be covered by the insurance if they go on part-time?
Permanent, part-time.
Permanent, part-time. Can be in the future.
Because it'd be over 30 hours.
Oh, that's right.
Now, what you're doing, though, is adding another $20,000 back.
Right.
So that'd be $28,000.
I don't want to, I don't want to add that back. Let's leave that as it is. But I'll agree that...
Well, that impacts his capability of servicing the fountain and the other facilities that this individual services.
You gotta draw a line somewhere here. We keep adding this stuff back and adding it back. We're supposed to be cutting a budget here.
Can we include, yeah, that whole, once again, the whole fountain issue and how long it's run and what the other options are? I, like I said, I would move to table that and bring it back to council again.
Okay, that's fine.
When are we looking at taring that back, then, if we are trying to craft a budget? Because I don't believe the commissions will have time to meet and determine that. They are looking at a three- to six-month period to just get organized, get started, determine the issues, and work on some solutions.
If you add back the $8,000, let us worry about the trades worker, because we may be able to get more maintenance work. For example, maybe water and sewer can come over and look at these pumps and work that way, so we'll still eliminate the position.
All right.
And we'll look at that option. If we can't get that to work, we'll bring that back to you, and there may be, you know, somewhere down the line of budget amendment. There's always an option, too, and to see how that capability goes.
We're also not adopting a budget till September, and I'm going to probably strongly suggest tomorrow that we leave ourselves a little bit of breathing room, because we still have several kind of large unknowns in terms of how the general fund's going to shake out in final by September with insurance and a couple of things like that. So, you know, that could go either way, so.
And Mayor, I would like to address a comment you made, and that was that we're trying to cut it. I do have definitive parameters, and that is my promises to the children and the families of our community, as well as to the businesses and especially the tourism industry within our community. So I look at everything that we as a group are trying to cut through those lenses, so I just want to make that comment.
Well, you have to use the lens also of increasing ad valour on tax, then.
Understood.
I think so far, we're looking at decreasing taxes. I still end up with a cut.
Depends on what Cindy comes back with us tomorrow.
Depends on how we end, but...
$300,000 mark, aren't we?
We're still, we add some of these back, it went down from there, but we've still got some breathing room. But again, you know, that's at last year's tax rate, which we're not done yet. I mean, we've still got some things that we're going to find out about later on this summer that are not entirely under our control. But yeah, at last year's tax rate, as we proposed this, we still do have some breathing room with all these backs so far.
That's right. We're using last year's tax rate.
Well, I believe some of these items are spongable. I mean, if we get caught...
Can you define spongable?
Variable. You know, I mean, a lot of the things that we're adding back in there are not permanent items. For example, cutting back at the pool, that is something that you can do midstream in order to make up for an unforeseen event that happens that we couldn't make up on the millage.
That's a good point.
What we don't have yet are general insurance estimates, you know, and we're rolling with last year's numbers, so that could have, you know, easily $100,000 impact on the general fund. That's why I'm saying, you know, for now, if we're setting a knot to exceed millage, which is tomorrow's discussion, you know, maybe we leave ourselves in a place where we know it could go down from there, but we don't get hit with any big surprises in the next month or so that we can't control, so.
And also, we're in, we are still in the minutes of the unionations, and whether we sign that in order to impact next year's budget, again, could cause some serious deviations.
Get back to Recreation.
Yeah. So you're going to come back with us, Jim, are you and...
Yeah, what I'm hearing, and I think the motion, the original motion was, and I don't think you've taken a vote on it, is to reinstate the $8,000 in the budget, and then we will look at that and we will come back to you as to how we would cover that $8,000.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Back to the blue book on page 153. Does anyone have anything?
And to go forward again with the other salaries that you're expecting to be cut, you said the tradesmen and the other two were...
And then your, your one position with the lifeguards, we would bring, we would have that one position back in, the one that had left. So your operating salaries will go up, but then we'll, we'll be lowering our part-time salaries and a permanent part-time position, because we would have had that person rotating, so it's going to be one for one. And I'll get with Cindy on that. Your, your other permanent part-time position that could be affected is over at Leisure Square. We will have a clerical assistant, I think it's a clerical, no, it's a, well, just go with, we're going to have one of our permanent part-time workers go from a full-time job to a part-time casual job as one of our adjustments because of our adjustments at Leisure Square.
And what is their role?
Their role is basically covering desk, helping out with scheduling, things like that, over at Leisure.
Do we utilize online capability for various recreational functions within the city that could be done online, rather than having a staff person sitting? I know the answer to this. You're smiling, because you know we've had this conversation over the years. But in terms of, you know, paying for that, most cities are doing everything like that. People go online, they put the credit card in, it shows out on a printout, you know exactly who's going to show up, instead of an individual keying this all in and running the credit card.
So far, we don't. Now, one thing I will say is, we've got a meeting, as a matter of fact, with Javier and Cindy tomorrow with our Wells Fargo for our credit cards, so we're pretty excited about that. We're going to have a discussion with them with getting credit card machines into the facility, so that's where we're at. So your answer to the other question is, we're not there yet.
Why would we get credit card machines into the facilities and, again, need employee time to do that when people could go online and pay it by credit card and have a service that provides that?
We're certainly miles from that capability. We actually don't have that capability for our utility bills at this point, but it's something that we've talked about doing. So as we move toward, you know, really good web payment portals for our customers, we'll consider throwing the Recreation Department into that mix.
Ms. Turner, did we ever look at that in benchmarking to see what type of services like that, or is that something that we could easily do?
Under finance, we did, and as a general thing, we did look at whether they had automatic paying or not, but not in a recreation area.
And Cindy's been good about, we've talked about it at City Council meeting, as Jim, about saying that this is something across the city that really needs to be accomplished, and it's to be accomplished sometime soon, this year certainly, right, Cindy?
The credit cards, definitely. The online web payment is a little more complicated from a software standpoint, from integration with our general ledger and our banking, but it's a goal and one that, you know, again, as we talked about, to put that in place, and again, utility bills are the big ones, before we sell the electric utility means doing a project three times as complicated as it needs to be. So we're working with that. IT is our bank, and we've got a team of people looking at the best way to approach that without wasting any money by putting something in place that we'll discard quickly.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
154, 155, anybody have any questions?
Just have a real quick question. Rob, where is, where is the line item for Little League?
One, you're right on the right page, 155, the utilities.
Wait, I think we're still on 154 at the moment, though.
Oh.
Let's see if there was anything there. When we say athletics, can you tell me what that encompasses?
That includes the lifeguards, that includes the gymnastics program.
I'm sorry, I'm on page 154 expenditures.
Athletics, yes. Athletics would still include, yeah, it will include fees, costs from the lifeguards, the gymnastics program. It would also include the tennis program. Anything that is what we would consider athletic equipment, shirts, whatever, whatever it takes, AED stuff, pads, anything. We utilize that for at all.
That's a lot of different things you mentioned, and yet a very small line item on the budget, so you're keeping those things for a long time, I suppose. You're not really turning over that equipment.
Not major, and we've been, we've been active with that, and our supervisors have been really good about maintaining what we need and going that way.
And the line item of landscape slash recreation as an expenditure?
That comes from the Parks Department.
Okay, so that's a rollover from Parks for maintenance of the fields?
Mm-hmm. Your facilities, et cetera.
155, on the bottom, under utilities is what we're talking about for the...
Little League. Basically, the bottom line with Little League is that Little League, I'm just, I'll give you really simple numbers. It was 24, 6, 60, but let's just keep it simple. Roughly around $30,000 is spent on utilities, which includes water, sewer, electric for your, for your Little League expense, and in return, we receive $150 per team, and generally, we receive about $5,000 in a year. So your difference is $25,000, roughly.
I was just saying, do we have a breakout of the children that participate in Little League? How many are really city residents and how many are county? Where I'm going here is saying, hey, if we have a predominant county participation, then I think it behooves us to at least go back to the county and say, hey, this is a program that's supported, yeah, supporting the whole county, and see if we can get a contribution from the county.
We don't get that from Little itself, and I know that, I've got to watch what I, we know that we don't have that number right now from the Little League.
Have we asked for that number?
But we can certainly ask them.
I thought, I could have swore we asked for it in the past.
It changes.
I thought I saw it.
And I know it runs between 60 and 80%.
Are from county. Do we charge for the gymnastics programs a separate price for residents? I know we do. And that differential is an additional...
It varies, but it can be anywhere from 15 to 30%.
15 to 30% more for out-of-county residents?
Yes.
And yet, we're looking at 600 kids?
Right.
And so 80% of those would be 500 kids or so.
Sure.
So for those 500 kids, even if we charge them an extra 10 bucks, we're going to only be earning 5,000, which is going to be a tiny bit of this electrical bill.
Also, Rob, if you don't mind, explain the relationship between Little League using county fields.
Yes.
Use them.
Yeah, you got a couple of different things there. One of...
It's not free.
Right, right. One of the things that we learned, too, is that they are, the Little Leagues have to go rent the county fields to have practices and things like that, and...
How much is that?
It, I, I don't know if Donnie's here, if he can give you that number. I think he could probably give you that number.
It varies.
I'm sorry, you'll have to come to the mic, sir.
Please.
That was something we learned.
I didn't know that either.
Yeah, there is no contribution.
I think the county should be supporting Little League. I mean, this is not a city function.
Name and address again? No. It varies depending if you want to use the lights. If we don't use the light, it's like 25 bucks an hour. If we use the lights, it's like 45 to 55 bucks an hour, depending on some of the facilities, depending on what lights we're using and what lights we're not using. So, yes, they do charge us.
So it is cost advantageous to your team to utilize to the maximum capability, the city, where we don't charge you?
Well, we don't, we only run the field certain times of the year. The field is not running right now.
Right.
And it only runs through February, February, April, May, June. So we've finished, we're only, we only run for four months, and we make sure that we only run the lights a couple hours a night.
Right.
Four games, not practices. So we are doing everything we can to keep our costs down to do the right thing.
Now, your league, is it encompassing the entire county, or is it just encompassing the locality around the city?
No, we got, like you guys, it's probably about 70, 30. I would, that would be my educated guess, 70% county, 30% city.
But do you have your practices and games on a larger percentage in the city because we don't charge you? Or are you still holding practices at county facilities and paying those fees?
We do do that, because we don't have a big enough facility to have all of these practices. When you have, what, 16 teams, you just, there's not enough. So we do not practice under the lights. When we practice, we do not use the main field, which has the lights. We use the four, I'll call them fields, that are off to the, to our, to our north. Those are the four fields that we use to practice on.
Okay.
Okay? We do not use the lights.
But you pay a rental fee for those?
No. Those are right next to Michael's Field. I don't know if you know the four fields right next to Michael's Field?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, that's what we use for our practice.
Those are city as well.
Yes.
The one over by the high school would...
Yeah, the by the high school is what we have to, we have to pay for. Some of our, some of our coaches, they go over there because they can, they have money.
And do you require the individual team coach to then pay for the county for that field?
That's their choice. They make the choice.
And so then they charge their kids more to play on that, to play on their teams?
A lot of the coaches take it out of their own pocket. It's for the kids. We do this for the kids.
Okay.
So basically, what you're telling me is the county sticks it to you.
Absolutely.
Anywhere they can.
We just, we just spent the last couple of-
Sharp stick in the eye.
We spent the last couple of months playing in All-Stars. We played in Martin County, St. Lucie County. We played down south a lot, and all of their fields are maintained by the county and the city, and they're immaculate.
They're nice.
It's, I mean, and I don't mean any disrespect, but it's embarrassing, you know, to us. You know, I got a field from 1955, and I love it for what it is, but, man, I do everything I can to keep it up, and it's killing us, so.
You're talking about Michael's Field?
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks pretty shabby.
Yeah, the one thing I was going to say is that Donnie, along with the other two presidents, have done a really nice job of trying to keep their costs down to us.
They have reduced those costs by over 25 percent just in the last couple of years.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So where you want to go with this? Do you want to go back to the county? You can go to the county and bang on their door, but they're not going to, they're not going to help. I can tell you that already. Somebody has an ingenious method of doing that.
We can ask. I, you know, I would imagine they're not going to balance their budget again this year, so I would imagine they're not going to have any money for us, but you can always ask, and you can always get it on the record, their nice letter in return.
Do you want the mayor to send it or me?
Yeah.
Makes no difference, I guess.
Yeah, I'll sign it.
You'll sign it, okay.
Yeah.
And we'll just ask for the $24,000 differential.
Right, right.
And Mr. Zork is a family man. He has a number of children at home. It might be a nice idea to send it to him. He may be more amenable to this than some of our other commissioners.
And it may be helpful to note some of the history. I was going to say, at what point that the county quit, they used to contribute to our recreation funds, the reason why we separated our recreation account out in this manner. In fact, I'm not sure what the amount of funds we used to receive from the county.
680 in 2002. 680 in 2000.
And since 2002, yeah, we, the city residents have picked up all the recreation program for the whole county, you know, and I think we could kind of, and say, hey, you know, these are programs we can clearly identify that are, you know, the majority of the benefit is going to county residents, and, yeah, at least to make our case.
And will you be able to provide some of those details and statistics for his letter?
Mm-hmm.
His letter? Their letter?
He'll coordinate with Tammy.
So we're going to table that option right now until we hear back from our friends?
You better leave it there, because I know what the answer's going to be.
Yeah.
And send that letter-
Actually, leave it there, and then we'll make that request so we can adjust it accordingly as a revenue stream.
Copy, courtesy copy the letter, not just to Joe Baird, but to each commission member.
Okay, you're going to send the letter, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that. We'll send it to all, everybody.
You want to pin it, and I'll sign it?
Yeah.
I'll make sure I get you the statistics.
I think we can all sign it if you really want.
I'd like to.
That's a good idea. That's a good idea. I like that.
And I'll get with the presidents and make sure we have the city versus county. I'll make sure they get us all those numbers.
And if we can also send a copy, do we have a county recreation commission now? I don't know. I thought they sunsetted that one.
That was a budget cutting.
Do we have a chair of recreation, or a, who is in charge of recreation for the county?
Right now, it's, I think it's overseeing that group is Mike Zito.
It's, okay.
And Mike Redstone is the working-
Mike Redstone. Let's copy Mike Redstone on that letter as well.
In the interim-
For many years, he served on our city recreation commission, and he knows very well what we're up against.
Should I, for the assumptions for tomorrow, should I go ahead and put that 25 back, though?
Yes.
Okay. Is that a yes?
Yes.
We're going to leave it in.
Leave it in.
Leave it in.
We're going to put it back, or leave it out?
No, leave it out.
Leave it out?
It's going to go just like it is.
Okay, so we're going to leave it out?
Yeah. We're leaving it just like it is.
Only thing I saw on there was the printing and binding was a 6 percent reduction.
Yeah, what we're doing with that is, the idea with that was just, we print out our brochure once a year, and the idea from our department was to see whether we can either get sponsorship to offset that or print them ourselves if we need to, and do that more on a quarterly basis and not print out as many as we normally do with our-
Yeah, but your sponsorship, recreation sponsorship has dropped by 41 percent, so.
Hey, that is more of, that's the expense side. We're going to be looking at absorbing that into our regular budget.
When you say the brochure, do you mean the yearly book or the quarterly or the monthly book? So don't you have a monthly book that goes out for seniors?
Yeah, that senior newsletter, senior activities is one that we, that will continue on, that's a-
And that is still on here?
That's still okay. The one we're talking about is the brochure itself, the yearly brochure.
And can we do that as a PDF and put that online to save funds? Okay.
That's one of the things that we're going to do for sure.
Okay, great. And we could add that on to the Chamber websites and to other websites to get the information out?
Absolutely. That's where we're leaning.
Anything on 156?
Also, just for some information, the Lifeguard Association talked about the advertising. Robbie is looking into that, and not only the lifeguard stance, but other opportunities where we can have promotions. And the, I talked to the individual as well. He's the one that's doing the advertising on the goal line buses, and he understands the limitations of what we can promote on any city facility, and I think we've come to somewhat of an understanding of that. But it also provides that, he assures me that the local businesses are really wanting to get on there as well. For example, hotels or restaurants and that kind of stuff, so any way we can promote. So we're looking at many of those opportunities. It's not going to be a whole lot of funding, but it'll be something that offsets some of our costs.
Yeah, I was going to say, and as yet, right now, we're looking at just, you know, $1,100 for a paddleboard for the lifeguard. I mean, this is basic equipment. I mean, these are things that we could easily fund through, you know.
I thought we had a donate, we had a donation of a paddleboard to, is this for another one?
This is for one more.
Okay. And if, to go back to the advertisement, if you will also ask him if it's possible to do the type with, you know, a couple ads on it, and then, you know, some brochures on the side for, you know, different community tourism things to help out, or perhaps a map of the community, you know, where people can find different things, so they're not bothering the employees with those questions.
Sure.
Not that they're readily available to answer the questions, but it does take their time.
We will, just to let you know, too, we are meeting with that gentleman on Monday with Jim and Tim McGary. We wanted to just make sure we get everybody in line.
Let's bring Tim Grabenour in as well, because we were talking about doing that at the marina.
Okay, yeah, I'll pull him in. I'll make sure I get him in.
We may be making modifications to our sign ordinance, just for information.
It's for a good cause. Okay, anything else? The surfboard, paddleboard, rather, excuse me, and then 159, the recreations.
Just want to clarify, this paddleboard is not a recreational paddleboard. This is for life-saving. I was going to say, the public here paddleboard, or they might think, oh, they're playing games, or it's, you know, anything else, but this is a life-saving device.
That's right.
If we could look at the expenditures on 159 in the context of his five-year program, if you could grab your five-year CIP book and page 108. And again, what he's got there is just a snapshot of one year as opposed to this five-year look.
Can we talk about the tennis courts at Pocahontas and the usage of those? Because I rarely see someone out there playing tennis.
Wow, okay.
You?
Oh, yeah.
At Pocahontas?
Well, we're right there, so, you know, we're always, they're usually, yeah, they're definitely being-
Great, well, that's good to know.
And it just, it just varies. I mean, again, it goes with, during the season, a lot more play on there. We also have some folks, and we have the Round Robins, and we have, and that was one thing that they had talked about with the tennis group as well, was that they have an inundation of people that want to play Round Robin.
Good.
When they have too many, they shoot them over to Pocahontas. The other thing is weekends and more of your nighttime, cooler times is when they're going to go and utilize those. So they're pretty heavily utilized.
And when was the last time those were resurfaced?
2006, I think, 2005-6.
And what is usually the life cycle of the resurfacing project?
They can vary, but usually about six to eight years.
Okay. So right now, we're at about six?
We're there. We're getting there, yeah.
I was just saying, it also becomes a safety issue when the courts aren't in good condition or tripping hazards and-
And I'm going to be coming forward next Tuesday for the resurfacing of Riverside Tennis. We had a bid, and it came in about $14,000 lower.
On 108, you'll see in the amended 1213, there's a mystery line that disappeared because the project we were just speaking of is what comes up to those 66-131. There's actually a couple of 1213 projects, so we'll correct that mistake. I guess the thing I wanted to point out here, too, we talked about this yesterday, in 1415, and that's a fairly large capital project that's coming out, which is $120,000 for pump replacement at Royal Palm Point. Of that 120, the transfer in from the 311 fund to support it, it's 100,000 of that is actually from the Whittaker Trust by way of 311, so I'll clarify that. So it's about 100 grand coming from Whittaker Trust towards that pump replacement at Royal Palm Point.
Wow, I love that. That's great. That's excellent.
Any comments on the five-years plan?
I do want to ask one question. I know there's been talk over the years about the useful life of the community center, and that the building is very old, and it, I'm surprised there's nothing on the five-year budget for rehabilitation of that building. My concern is that building is lying so close to the railroad, and I brought this up earlier, and if we get 36 trains a day at 80 miles an hour zooming past on two tracks 200 feet away from the community center, we're going to run into some severe problems. I don't know if you've looked at that, if we've had some of our staff take a look at that, and what the ramifications are to that building.
Well, we've, and the building's been there since the 60s, and you definitely get plenty of settling where you have, you have cracks and things that you would see that are definitely part of the building. And keeping in mind, not only do you have the railroad traffic, but you've got to remember, we've had one, two, three, four, five events, I think, since then?
Windstorms, yeah.
So the amazing thing about that building is it's very resilient for all that, for all that's happened with Gene and Francis and all of those things. It's amazing. But I will say that the railroad, we know that the railroads and those events have definitely made that building settle a little bit, and you definitely get some cracking issues and things like that. So long-term, it's a tough building. One of the things that we've looked at is, you know, it's been tough times, you know, we kind of look at these things and just try to say, okay, what can we do to keep it plugging along with the way it is? But long-term, yes, I can see change coming, but-
And as well as Leisure Square.
Oh, absolutely.
Overall maintenance, I know that there are many things, projects that have been on, that kept putting on the back burner. I think these are things that we need to go ahead and identify, Rob, and put them, yeah, and get them into, get them into our, get them into our five-year plans.
Right, the other departments are putting placeholders going out.
And, yeah.
And I'm good with that, and I know that we can get with Cindy and everyone else and just start making that happen for sure, and just put that on and just make it, make it happen, because I think Craig's word is so right, tired.
And I think, yeah, and it's things that, you know, we have to be able to plan for, so we know that, hey, we've got these areas that they're going to need attention and be able to quantify those dollars up ahead. So, thank you.
Let me bring this up, just a point for discussion, nothing more, but the office quarters that Patty and Rob and so on have over there are not very good. And as you walk around this building and other buildings, we have lots of vacant space, and I just ask the question, is there a re, I mean, they were over at the jail once, or what was the jail?
[laughing]